The Dubuque County Board of Supervisors meeting Monday, February 24th, 2020, 5:30 PM. At this time, I would ask everyone to please rise and remove your caps for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next up is, uh, public comments, uh, and this is, uh, uh, for items that, uh, are on the agenda. So at this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. This is an opportunity to talk about something that's on the agenda. But if you're here for, uh, something to do with zoning or something like that, uh, that wouldn't apply because you'll have time to do that at this time. So does anybody have, uh, if anybody would like to make a public comment about something that is on the agenda, please feel free to go to the podium at this time. And if you do so, please state your name and home address. Alright, seeing none, uh, we'll go into the agenda. Item number one on the agenda is a proclamation. Uh, do we have anyone here for the Irish American Heritage Month proclamation? Seeing none.
Irish in the room.
Right here, I'm actually, uh, I was going to point out that I am actually a member of this organization, but, uh...
Then you should read it.
Yeah, I will read it. So proclamation, March 2020, Irish American Heritage Month. Whereas the Irish heritage of the Dubuque area is an important part of the community's character and identity. And whereas a celebration of Saint Patrick's Day will be held starting at three, 3 o'clock PM on the 14th day of March in the year 2020 at Happy's Place, 2323 Rockdale Road, Dubuque, Iowa. This seventh annual Irish celebration is sponsored by the Ancient Order of Hibernians, A.O.H., Dubuque Division Number Two, re-founded in 2013, and the Lady A.O.H., Dubuque County Division Number One, founded in 2017. And whereas Irish Americans have made an indelible mark on the history of Dubuque, the United States, and the world. And Irish Americans are proud of their deep cultural, historical, and familial ties that have contributed to the strength of our vibrant relationship with Ireland for more than 100 years. And now therefore, the County of Dubuque supervises on behalf of the staff and citizens of the County of Dubuque, Iowa, to hereby proclaim the month of March 2020 as Irish American Heritage Month in the County of Dubuque, Iowa, and call upon our citizens to recognize the efforts of the Ancient Order of Hibernians, Dubuque County Divisions Number One, Dyersville, and Number Two, Dubuque, and the Lady Ancient Order of Hibernians, Dubuque County Division Number One. Proclamation adopted this 21st day of February 2020, Dubuque County Board of Supervisors. And, uh, what's your pleasure?
On behalf of all the Mix, the McDonnas, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
On behalf of the Mulhalls, where my great-grandfather, uh, I will make a mo- I will second your motion.
Okay, and then under discussion and with the, uh, uh, my great-grandmother Nians, which is a German name, but she was adopted off the orphan train that was sent from New York across the country. So she was pure Irish and, uh, Mary Nians and, uh, my grandfather Swift. So, all, uh, in favor of approving the proclamation signify by saying aye.
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 It's carried. We'll make sure that gets to Bob Felderman and, uh, Mike Martin, so. Alright. Number two on the agenda, approval of minutes of the meeting of February 10, 11, 12, 14, and 20 of 2020. You can tell we were in budget.
I did have a change and a met, um, to one, um, of the February 14th minutes. Um, there's a word presentation with regard to $390,000 that should be implementation. So it's on page 51 and it's February 14th minutes. I think Mary may already have made that change, but just wanted to point that out.
Any other additions or corrections? Alright, so is the motion to approve as corrected?
I'll make a motion to approve minutes as corrected.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as corrected. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Alright, we have, uh, consent items under item number three. A is beer permit, Divitt's Golf Shop. B is liquor license, Sherrill Firefighters. C is liquor license, Timberline Golf. And D is liquor license, Fillmore Bar and Grill. I believe we can approve these with one motion on the consent items.
I will make a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Item number four on the agenda, procurement procedures. We have, uh, proof of publication, uh, that we need a motion for approval. Uh, the, uh, it, it pointed out that the deadline for receiving of bids was 4 o'clock PM today and that the bids will be opened at this meeting.
Make a motion to approve the proof of publication.
And I will second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the proof of publication, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, carried. Okay, next up, 4B, we have receipt of bids, bridge replacement on Gun Club Road, project LFM dash B 21-03-dash-7X-dash-31. We'll go to Anthony and Mary and Dawn. They'll give us the results.
How many do we have?
Yeah.
Three?
Three bids.
Three.
Okay, thank you. We had lots of plans out.
Okay, this is, um, hold on.
Gun Club Road?
No, this is Hush Road. Next. Okay, so this is Gun Club Road, bridge replacement. Uh, first bid is from Jim Schr- Schrader Construction in the amount of $579,438.55. So just two bids? Just two bids? Okay, so the last bid here, here is from Taylor Construction in the amount of $560,557.85.
Make a motion to receive the bids and, um, refer them to the county engineer.
I will second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to receive the bids, refer them to County Engineer Anthony Bargett, uh, for his recommendation. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. The next up is receipt of bids, uh, bridge replacement on Hush Road,
Okay, first bid is from K Construction in the amount of $321,254.28. Oh, okay, so this is, this would be the Gun Club bid.
Okay.
Yeah, this one is Gun Club.
They have their own project number.
No, that's Gun Club.
Yeah, we can still read it into the record and we can note the amendment.
So K Construction also put in a bid for Gun Club Road in the, in the amount of $677,558.62.
Do we feel that's the last one for Gun Club Road?
That should be the last one.
I'll make a, a motion to include all three of the bids for Gun Club Road for Schrader, Taylor, and K Construction, uh, and have the county engineer review those and bring us his recommendation.
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion made and seconded to receive and refer to the county engineer the three bids, uh, for the Gun Club Road Bridge Replacement Project. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero.
Okay, the next bid for the, the Hush Road Bridge Project is from Jim, Jim Schrader Construction in the amount of $282,889.94. $282,889.94. Final? Okay, final bid from Taylor Construction in the amount of $270,719.20. $270,719.20.
What's your pleasure?
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to, um, receive the bids and refer them to the county, the county engineer for his recommendation.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to receive the bids, refer to the county engineer for his recommendation. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried. Okay, next up is, uh, 4D, receipt of bids. RCD culvert extensions, pipe culvert replacements, and grading on Lansing Road and Black Hills Road.
Okay, we have seven bids on this one. First bid is from Steger Construction in the amount of $276,851.46. $276,851.46. The next bid is from McDermott Excavating. Amount, amount is $328,644.75. Okay, the next bid is from, looks like Temporley Excavating. Um, the amount is $259,992.60.
Do you have a spelling on that?
It's T-E-M-P-E-R-L-E-Y.
Thank you.
They are out of East Dubuque. Okay, the next bid is from Main Line Excavating in the amount of $359,189.60. $359,189.60. And the next bid is from Top Grade Excavating in the amount of $248,238. Next bid is from Chick-fry Excavating in the amount of $306,721.57. And the last bid is from K Construction in the amount of $343,413.97.
That's the final bid?
Final bid.
I'll make a motion to, uh, receive and file the bids and refer to the county engineer for his recommendation.
Second.
Okay. Motion was made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. E is a notice to bidders, HMA paving, full depth, reclamation on Lansing Road and Black Hills Road, project L-O-S-T-dash-21-02-dash-73-dash-31. So this is a notice to bidders.
Make a motion to publish notice to bidders.
And I will second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the publishing of the notice to bidders for the Lansing Road and Black Hills Road project. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. So next up is item number 4F, notice to bidders, micro-surfacing on Asbury Road, Military Road, Schuler Heights Road, and Skyline Road. Notice to bidders.
I'll make a motion to approve the notice to bidders and publish.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve and publish the notice to bidders. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Next up is item number 4G. Uh, this is a recommendation of the county sheriff to purchase two 2020 Ford Police Utility Interceptor four-door all-wheel-drive vehicles. Documents are in the packet?
Yeah, and it appears that, uh, the, the lowest bid by just a few hundred dollars was from Des Moines. And the second lowest was from Finn and Ford, in which they recommend, recommended purchase from Finn and Ford.
That's correct. And, and the rationale was the, the putting in the manpower and miles to go fetch the vehicle from Des Moines would take it over the price of the, uh, local bid.
And a $250 difference on a $35,000 purchase, I would definitely want to go local with that. So I will make a motion to, uh, approve the county sheriff's recommendation for the purchase of, uh, the bid from Finn and Ford.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the recommendation of the county sheriff, uh, with regarding the purchase of two 2020 Ford Police Utility Interceptor vehicles. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Next up is item five on the agenda, which is, uh, public hearings. First, uh, item under 5A is a proof of publication, and that is for tonight's, uh, public meeting.
Make a motion to approve the proof of publication.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the proof of publication. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. So, next up is, uh, 5B, which is, uh, public hearing amendment to the FY20 Secondary Roads Five-Year Construction Program and the FY21 Dubuque County Secondary Road Five-Year Construction Program.
Is it okay if I dim that down a little?
Yeah, if you hit the bottom one, it should just go, perfect.
Alright. Okay, well, I'll start real quick here with the, um, the amendment to the current fiscal year. Um, just a couple of projects that, um, I'm looking at making a change on. The first would be, uh, we need to amend in the current fiscal year the HMA paving of Black Hills and Lansing Road, um, which we, um, are putting out for bids for, for plans. And the, the second project would be, um, adding in a project number four, reimbursing the city of Dubuque for the right-of-way cost for the Southwest Arterial Project. I think we'll have some, some of the, well, we have the initial about $185,000 and then we talked about, uh, funding the, the remaining. For this fiscal year, I'm, I'm putting in there for the 185,000. And as, um, Mr. Schizzle spoke, uh, it'd be probably about six months before everything's finalized. So we would have a, probably eventually a second project number in the next fiscal year that we'll, we'll add in. And then, um, one other thing that I'd like to highlight here is I'm actually removing, um, the, s- the, the actual federal aid swap project for Old Highway Road. And I'm going to do a little switcheroo. So, uh, I'm, I'm, you'll see it-
This from Cyple to, uh, the Piasta?
So, um, I'm actually going to, um, we can move into this next fiscal year, but I'm going to reprioritize, um, Sundown Road to the north.
Okay.
And, and in two years, um, add in all of Old Highway Road in our foreign-to-market funding. So we would get all of Old Highway and one shot.
All the way to Farley?
Yes. Yes. And, um, you know, obviously we have some problems on Sundown Road to the north, be, between Old Highway and Asbury Road. So I'm looking at prioritizing with our, our, uh, RPA swap money into that project. So, start off here with, uh, fiscal year 21. Not sure how well you can see that there, but the, that would be the green projects right there. So I'll start real quick here.
Anthony, I think with the exception of Wapton Road, um, it'd be hard to argue that Sundown Road, that north portion of Sundown Road isn't the worst road in the county or one of them.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's taken a beating, it's kind of falling apart. So that would actually be a fiscal year 21 project obligated in October. So it's a federal fiscal year obligation. So we can start, um, planning, planning it right now and bidding it out this, this fall for an actual pro, you know, construction project next year.
Okay.
But we're showing it as a fiscal year 21 project. So for FY21, we're looking at doing a, a little portion of Old Castle Road right here. It's the first three-quarters of mile off of High One, Highway 136. Um, there's actually kind of two different segments here of this. This is a better-conditioned segment and then this is a little more poor condition there. Um, we also have Dyers West Road, um, that's a foreign-to-market project. Um, we have Black Hills and Lansing Road, which is right there. We have the Hush Road Bridge Project, which we just received, um, um, bids for. Here's the Wapton Road, um, paving project. And then here is the, uh, the Sundown Road, um, paving project, which would be, um, obligated for next year. And then we have, um, this would be the build grant project number. So as a part of it, it's where I'm highlighting Northwest Arterial, uh, because it's coupled with the, uh, the John Deere Area Roads as part of the build grant. We've had to move, uh, Riverside Drive, um, it's currently still in this fiscal year, but we'll see how things shake out. It might spill into the following fiscal year, uh, past July, so I still have that reflected there. I have the Simon Road Bridge, which is actually a, um, federal aid swap project, which is also obligated in October. Um, so that would be, start bidding it, start bidding it out this, after this October for construction next year. Let's see, then we have, um, we have the micro-surfacing projects that, uh, that we just, we just showed or just went through with, um, for notice to bidders for Military Road, um, Schuler Heights Road, and, uh, Asbury Road. And let me see. I'm going to zoom that in a little bit there. Also, a portion of Skyline Road as well would be a part of the micro-surfacing project. That's pretty well it for fiscal year 21. For fiscal year 22, um, we'd be looking at doing a paving project on Cedar Ridge Road. Just going to go through my list here. Okay, English Mill Road, which would be, um, right up in here. This would be for construction next year. And we have a, uh, bridge replacement, um, right here. Okay, that's at the end of Hidden Valley Road, I didn't think what the heck I was there. Um, that's Supervisor Baker, that's, that's the one, uh, short, uh, short bridge that we looked at at the end of Hidden Valley Lane.
Yes. Okay.
So that's a currently 10-ton bridge. It's a, it's actually not considered a bridge because it's a less than 20-footer.
Okay.
So it's not in our inventory, but we'll be looking at replacing that. Um, then we have a couple of box culverts, uh, in the Terry McCallister Roads. We have a bridge replacement on Kerper Harbor Road. And a bridge replacement down here on Steger Road. And a bridge replacement up here on Clear Creek Road. Um, really though, I'll just, I guess I'll just highlight the, uh, the major paving projects we have going on for fiscal year 23, looking at doing all of Old, Old Highway from Farley over to, uh, Cyple. Then, um, another, uh- Starting to focus on some paving projects in the southern part of the county. We have a Higginsport Road in fiscal year 23. We have some, uh, bridge replacements. So we're starting to knock out, um, the bridges that are 25 tons and less. Over the next couple of years, we're going to start seeing those, uh, go by the wayside. Goal is to try to get everything that's about 30 tons and above in about three to four years. I guess another pro, um, paving project in fiscal year 24 would be, uh, Hick Bernard Road. We would have Graff Road and North Cascade Road. Now, the section of North Cascade that, um, I'm kind of waiting to see how things shake out would be the stretch off of, um, um, off of Highway 20. Uh, we want to get the, uh, Southwest or, or the Swiss Valley Interchange constructed first and then, um, I don't, I'm not currently reflecting that in the, in the program, but I think we're going to have to eventually address that section to meet up with what the city of Dubuque is doing.
Anthony, you had mentioned North Cascade is, um, White Top? That section of White Top in there, or, um, or is that in a different year?
That would be in our maintenance program.
Okay.
Um, so I'm, I'm not showing this, uh, any of the, any of the paving projects we're doing with our maintenance crew. I'm not showing that here. But White Top would be one of the ones that we're looking at for this year with our maintenance crew.
When is the city looking at, um, the same road, North Cascade?
Um, I think they're bidding that out this year. So it'd be, I think, construction this year.
So removing some of the corners and things too?
Yeah. So, um, yeah, there's kind of a good balance of, uh, structures and, and paving projects happening there. This is what I would, I would, I would call this more of a normal construction program versus what we've been doing. You know, I think we've, we've spent the balances down to more of a, a sustainable, normal level. And this is what I envision as kind of a more of a normal, um, construction program. Also, you'll, you're seeing that, um, starting to implement, um, you know, some micro-surfacing type projects. So, um, we're kind of getting away from having to do all of these major overlays. And now we're starting to the point where we can do some, just general maintenance on roads to try to keep them in good shape.
Yeah, I think as far as structures, I don't know if you have about five or six, that's the, the least amount that I've seen in my five years as far as in construction season.
Yeah.
We're starting to get back to more normal, that'd be probably more typical, you're saying?
Yeah.
In a five to seven versus the ten or more we've been doing?
Well, that one year, we had seventeen.
Seventeen?
And Anthony, you had a few places where people couldn't even get their LP delivered because of the reading of the bridges. And all those have been addressed, right?
Yeah. In fact, my first fall here, I had a farmer call me and say, okay, there's a three-ton bridge and a five-ton bridge. Which route do you want me to take? And what do I say to that? Well, I guess take the five-ton one.
So does the, box culvert that we're gonna be looking at, is it tomorrow, Johns Creek?
Yes.
Is that, is that just a repair so it doesn't show up here?
Yeah, that would be a repair. We've, we've taken a look at it already, it's, the box is in good shape. It's, it's really, we need to do some repair work underneath the box and around it.
Okay.
So something like that wouldn't show up in the
Okay.
Construction program.
Alright.
So, yeah, there's still a lot of work happening with our own maintenance crew. And even some, some maintenance contracted work that you're not seeing reflected here.
Okay.
So there's a lot more busyness happening just, just than this.
Certainly still an ambitious schedule.
Oh, yeah, we'll be busy.
Are you ready for open?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing related to the five-year plan.
Second.
Okay. Motion was made in second to open the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so, public hearing is open. And this is regarding the FY twenty secondary roads, five-year construction program. And the FY twenty-one Dubu County Secondary Road, five-year construction program. So if anyone would like to speak on this, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. I think that's a compliment to Anthony.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Anthony.
I think we have, should we address the resolution at this point?
We have the resolution now, resolution to approve the amended FY twenty Dubu County Secondary Road Construction Program. And the FY twenty-one Dubu County Secondary Road, five-year construction program. This is a resolution.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Motion made in seconded to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three to zero. Alright, next up is five C. This is a notice of public hearing. And this is a amendment, amendments to zoning ordinance. And this is a notice of public hearing for Monday, March ninth at nine AM.
Motion to table.
Is there?
Is this for the ordinance? Am I wrong?
Yeah, let's bring our zoning administrator, Tammy Henry.
We got three items we probably should approve.
I was gonna say.
For our notice.
You need to, the, the first three would, you'd want to go through and if you're wanting to table, just table the last one if you're deciding to do that.
Maybe you could explain the first three, just so we're all clear.
There are zoning cases that are waiting to come forward. And so I, I wouldn't ask that you'd table those, because they're, they're normal coming through.
Of course.
And if you want to table zoning case number six of twenty, that would be, I would just address that one separately.
Alright, so let me deal, let's deal with five C one. It's a notice of public hearing. So we're looking for approval for the notice of public hearing for case ZC number zero-two dash zero-three dash two-zero. William and Diane Brown and James Brown, A-one agricultural to A-two agricultural residential. Also, item C two, case ZC number two dash zero-four dash twenty. William and Diane Brown and James Brown, A-one agricultural to A-two agricultural residential. That was a different case number, by the way. Item number five C three, ZC number zero-two dash zero-five dash two-zero. Jesse and Sharon Meyer, A-one agricultural to A-two agricultural residential. So looking for a motion to approve the notice of public hearing for the amendments to the zoning ordinance.
So moved.
And I will second that.
Okay. Motion made in seconded, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carried three, zero. Those three are approved for public hearing, notice of public hearing. Now we have item number five C four. ZC number zero-two dash zero-six dash two-zero, amendment to zoning ordinance. Chapter one, C dash one conservancy. A dash one agricultural and A-two agricultural residential zoning districts.
I make a motion to table.
There's a motion to table. Is there a second? We had a work session on this and I, I, so I'm, I'm not gonna second it either. So, but I rule that the motion dies for lack of a second. Okay.
What I, what I had heard, and so this, so this notice is just to set the public hearing for March ninth. And so I, I heard from our representation from the zoning board that they weren't proposing any additional changes.
No.
And they had the language back to us. I heard also kind of consensus from the board that we were interested in the county's attorney opinion related to maybe residency. And related to the bed and breakfast component. With the county attorney here and with you here, my question would be is, do you feel or think you could review that within the next two weeks? To provide the, the board some guidance related to these zoning ordinances, changes?
Yeah, I, it, it would be pretty simple for us to run over and look at it and I can express what they were talking about today. I was gonna, you were gonna be on my call list.
The, the other opportunity we'd have is to have three readings before it's passed, right? So that could, that could take some more time as well.
Yes.
So I, I think I share your understanding, so it's been done as far as to review additional things. I, I think we, we should be able to do that within this timeframe.
I, no, I, I can definitely work that as long as CJ can and get that information to you.
And that sounded to me like the strong preference of Tammy and Angie and Jerry Seager from the zoning board. So I think that's where I'm at as well. But if we don't have clear direction on those issues, it may take additional readings to get that ironed out.
And, and maybe the procedure, Mary, if you could step in. So then if, let's say we couldn't solve things on the ninth, even for the first time, the public hearing could just stay open, correct?
Correct, until the next meeting.
Until the next meeting.
Yes.
And during that period, we still could, could work on, on, on issues, correct?
And my hesitancy was I was not ready for a public hearing because I was presented with a wealth of documents and ten years of historical context. And I need to be able to read it and digest it.
Okay, is there a motion?
I will make a, a motion to approve the notice of public hearing for the amendments to zoning, zoning ordinance, chapter one, C one, A one and A two zoning districts.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. Okay, next up on the agenda is item number six, approval of Platts. And we have a resolution approving final plat, Colander Farm subdivision, section thirty-one. Jefferson Township will refer this to our zoning administrator, Tammy Henry. Tammy?
So the property is owned by Kenneth Colander and it's located one point zero-two miles south of the city of Ercidsville along Colander Road. With a total of eighty point five-five-three acres surveyed. This property is owned A-one agricultural and A-two agricultural residential. The purpose of this plat is to separate the property for estate purposes. The survey creates three lots. Lot one is a total of twenty-four point eight-six-three acres surveyed and it will be sold to a family member. Lot two is a total of three point six-seven-four acres surveyed with a home and it will be sold to the son, Kevin Colander. Lot, lot three is a total of fifty-two point zero-one-six acres surveyed and it will be sold to a family member. Lot one and lot three will use an existing field entrance off of Colander Road. And lot two will use an existing residential entrance off of Colander Road. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat and there are no liens or mortgages on the property. All the signatures are current. This plat has been reviewed by myself as Platts officer and has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. So this case was into you and you did a rezoning in this area. And this is where the home and the farm buildings are. So that's the A-two part of this. And now they're coming in to finish up, to finish up the plat. So that the, this is for their father's estate.
This actually is an estate.
It is an estate.
Yes. Motion to approve the plat.
And I will second that.
Motion made in seconded to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is approved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, item seven, action items. First up, we have a under seven A, a resolution, appointment of deputies, assistants and clerks. We have three permanent part-time positions at Sunny Chris Manor. And we'll go to our HR director, Dawn Sherman.
I have reviewed these three and recommend approval. They're not adding any FTEs, they're just replacing employees who have left.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, motion made in seconded to approve the resolution, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, carried three, zero. Next up, seven B, resolution to approve the plans and specifications for the HMA paving, full-depth reclamation on Lansing Road and Black Hills Road. Project LOST dash two-one zero-two dash seven-three dash three-one. I would ask our county engineer, Anthony Bargat, if he has any input on this.
Okay, yeah, this would be paving about two-point-three miles worth of roads with Black Hills Road and Lansing Road. So we would be doing a full-depth reclamation of the existing gravel and stabilizing with cementitious additive to create our base. And then we would do our HMA paving on top of that. This would be also in relation to the bids we received with the culvert extensions, extension project. So that would be sort of phase one, this would be phase two of this.
Okay. And will these roads have, I, I know we're doing a culvert project as well. Will th- these roads have appropriate shouldering and such?
Yeah, so actually, we have some more narrow areas that we're gonna be doing some widening on. So in general, we're looking at around a four-foot shoulder. And those areas where we have those more narrow box culverts, we're gonna be widening, widening, widening those out and creating a wider blister through those areas.
Okay.
So we're trying to make it as safe as possible without going full-blown re-grading.
Yeah.
You know, it's kind of a, I think, a, a good, you know, median there, median project type, type project.
Alright, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve the resolution. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three, zero. Seven C, resolution to approve plans and specifications for the micro-surfacing on Asbury Road, Military Road, Shuler Heights Road and Skyline Road. Project LFM dash M two zero-one dash seven X dash three-one. Again, Anthony, any comments?
Yeah, the micro-surfacing is a, is a great preservation tool. It's similar to seal coat, but it's not. You don't have a loose chip. You add a, you know, maybe a half-inch worth of material to the existing, existing road. But adds about a five to seven-year, sort of, you know, it adds to the lifespan of the road and it gives about a five to seven-year reconditioning to the, to the road. So these, these roads are in really good shape and I want to keep them in good shape before we have to do any kind of major reconstruction on them. So this is just kind of a preservation treatment to keep them, keep them in good shape.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
Motion made in seconded to approve the resolution, open for discussion. Anthony, this is what should have been done on some of the roads that we're having to do a full replacement on now.
That's right.
Right in the past. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero. Item seven D, resolution to approve necessary documents with Geisler Brothers Company. For the design-build roads, Farley Shop ventilation renovation. The amount of fifty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars. I know we have Anthony here and we have Chris Soder, our maintenance superintendent. Chris, you want to give us the particulars on this?
Yeah, basically what the problem's been at Farley Shop is we can't remove the moisture fast enough during the winter season. And it's turning into a rainforest in there. We got water running down the walls, every time you open the garage doors, just fog rolls out of them. The goal with this is to create a system that has minimum five complete air exchanges an hour to remove that moisture and also keep the air conditioned in the wintertime.
Well, we've had discussion and work sessions on this, what's your?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
And I will second that.
Motion made in seconded to approve the resolution. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carried three to zero.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. This is item seven E, resolution approving the ECIA Brownfields Resolution. I know we have Mark Schneider here from ECIA.
Trader.
Trader. Guy said, Schneider.
Schneider.
Schneider, huh?
Schneider, I said it right.
I bet, I apologize. Trader, F, J, R, S.
Alright.
The other one that retired.
For a second there, I thought I made a mistake.
The mistake was mine.
Okay, and then, Mary, this, my understanding is this may have been approved at some point, but we have this in front of us, so we might as well go forward. Okay.
I can't hear you, Mary, thank you.
But would, would it be just as, would it be, we're ready to go through the process here to do the new one? Would that then take care of?
That suffice?
Okay.
Maybe Mr. Schneider can fill us in, you guys are talking code.
Okay, there was a previous, apparently a previous resolution.
A year ago.
That, a year ago that was approved but not signed. And so, the question was, should we just sign the previously approved resolution? Was just brought to my attention actually at the beginning of the meeting. And I did not have the opportunity to review it, nor did staff. So I think the appropriate way to go through this would be to just follow through with this resolution. Because this has been vetted. It's unfortunate that the previous one didn't get signed, but.
Maybe Mr. Schneider could provide commentary on what was signing?
Yeah, would you like to, Mark, would you like to give some input on this?
Mark Schneider with ECIA Community Development Director. As was mentioned by Dave, back in February fifteenth of twenty nineteen, this same resolution was approved by this board. However, the actual signature page of the memorandum of agreement had never been signed. What it is, is ECIA has a revolving loan fund that was provided by EPA for Brownfields. And the, the, the revolving loan fund requires that there be a coalition and that Dubu County was one of the members identified to be a member of the coalition. And also part of that is that you are certifying as a member that you don't have another EPA Brownfields project or grant in the county at this point in time. The agreement allows any community within Dubu County or the unincorporated area of Dubu County that may be a Brownfields project to be eligible for their funding.
Any questions for Mark?
And so is the only difference, the different cities that are now part of this Brownfield? You've got cities listed in blue indicate the ones that were not listed in the initial application but have since joined the coalition. Is that the only change?
Yeah, it would be the only change.
Okay. Good to see you've added more. Good to see you've added more. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Carried three to zero. Alright, we have, the next item is item seven F. It's a resolution approving the letter of support for Piasta's SRF funding request. And.
I did see representation from the city of Piasta. If there still is some that would like to comment on this, I'd be interested in hearing.
Hi, I'm Kelly Ludwig, city clerk, or deputy clerk for the city of Piasta. And I apologize, Whitney Beck, he was here and had to step out for a moment. She has to go get her daughter. So if you prefer to table until she's able to return, I do expect her in a few minutes. Or I can try to help and answer any questions that you may have. But this is SRF funding that we're working with MSA to hope to improve and protect the quality, water quality within the city of Piasta. So, and we're looking for your support in with that SRF funding that we are working with.
Okay. And this is a request, this is a support letter for, a letter to the State of Iowa Department of Natural Resources.
Correct.
Regarding revolving loan application.
Yep.
And I, I thought I saw that you had some waterways, figure two is impaired water bodies.
Yes, we do. We have three of them that have been identified. And I apologize because Whitney may have those. I know one of them is located within the Kelly Oaks Park, which is a fairly new park, located behind Seton School and Kelly Oaks subdivision. There are some waterways within there that are pretty much non-existent. And so we're looking to enhance that area there and improve that water quality. What's happening is we've got two watersheds that run through Piasta. And so what we're trying to do is retain water so that it's not heading south, going down to Cascade and damaging, you know, further on down. So fairly new to Piasta and then there's an area that is privately owned currently, but we're looking at retaining that property and doing some enhancement in there to also again retain more water and improve that within Piasta so that it stays more in that centralized area.
Any questions?
Right, I wondered about the impaired waterways. Are they, do they, do they have water quality issues? And do we have contaminated with bacteria?
Not currently, but there is potential. So that's what they're trying to, as Piasta's continuing to grow and more residential areas and industrial, commercial properties are growing, that's what they're trying to avoid is doing that and retaining that water so that it's not doing that. They're working on a wastewater treatment facility in Piasta. So again, making sure that all of that quality of water is, so there is no contamination.
And, and as of today, there's no financial ask from the county?
No, there is not.
It's just to support the application?
Yep, a letter of support.
I'm really pleased you're doing this. And that you're looking, forward-thinking about this and also looking for available funding sources for this as well. As we all throughout the whole county look at this issue, I, I appreciate that Piasta is leading on this yourselves without, you know, waiting. You're probably working with Eric Schmeckel from?
We are. We absolutely are, yeah. And then, as we continue to grow again, we recognize that growth and some of these issues could potentially be down the road. So we want to prevent those and again, continue to work on them so that we don't have issues and issues for cities further south or, you know, down the road.
Right. This is a little off topic, but Asbury, literally right behind my home, is working on a creek bed stabilization project. Same thing, trying to be good stewards of what's happening in a particular area, knowing that we need to, you know, we're seeing evidence of erosion. So I, I'm, you know, very happy that, to have this come before us. I would certainly make a motion to approve the resolution and join a letter of support.
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution approving the letter of support for Piasta's SRF funding request. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Carried three to zero. Thank you.
And you did just a great job.
Yes.
Okay, seven G, resolution approving the burn JAG application for FY twenty-one. This is a hundred and forty-eight thousand, hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents for the drug task force.
Motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Carried. Seven H, resolution approving the Asbury Fire Department loan. Fifty thousand dollars for a pumper truck.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second. Some discussion.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Open for discussion.
Do either of my colleagues know anymore about this? We have three before us. And they look like each of them is purchasing a significant piece of equipment and asking us for the interest-free, free loans. But I didn't know if, do, is it typical to get three? Should we really want to have six? You know, what, what's, I guess, just looking for context.
There's a committee that reviews these and recommends, they did do an informal rotation. So.
I think it's based on the individual city's needs.
Yeah, right.
That's what my thought is, is when they have that need, they, they go to the committee, as Supervisor Baker said, and say, hey, we're, we're at a time where we need this piece of equipment. And generally, the loan pool's been able to support, at least my understanding, all the asks so far.
And is there anything from the loan pool that indicates they reviewed them?
Yes, the minutes. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I, Mary, please, yes.
I do all the accounting on this with the loans. I, the payments come back to me. I keep track of the amounts in the checking account that's available for these loans. But the, for each one of them I have, that should have been in the packets, the.
The agreement and the signatures are. I don't know if the meeting notes are.
Okay, the.
But the agreements are, they're signed by the.
Loan Fund Committee meeting. I have a copy of all their minutes where they approve each one of these. And then Tom Berger is the one that signs the, the claim. And I have the application for each one.
Very good. That answers my question. So thank you for being right on that, Mary. Make a motion to, I guess we, I already done that.
For the first one, yeah. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Carried three zero. We have item seven I, a resolution approving the Centralia Piasta Fire Department loan, which is also fifty thousand dollars for a pumper.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Carried three to zero. Item seven J, resolution approving the Key West Fire Department loan. This is for a Clark fire and rescue boat in the amount of fifty thousand dollar loan.
A motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried three to zero. That was seven J. We're going to do item eight on the agenda, communications. We have a notice of public meeting regarding a proposed underground high voltage electric transmission line. The notice was a meeting that is scheduled for March sixteenth, five thirty PM at the Hotel Julian Dubuque.
Does anyone know anything about this? Beyond what we have in our packet?
It's, this is underground.
I do not, other than, no.
The previous and ongoing item that had some controversy with it was the.
Cardinal Creek.
Yeah, Cardinal Creek, Hickory, Hickory.
The only thing I've heard about this is it's supposed to follow railroad right away?
Yes.
I'm not sure if it's going to cross any roads anywhere, so.
Old railroad right over?
No, active, right by my house.
Active, okay. How did we get the information? I mean, does, how did it get into our packet?
It, it was sent to us because we own property in the proposed area, so then I put it on as a communication. So all the property owners get sent this letter.
And was it the one by the Little McCoca? We own that. Did they, did they say which property we own that hits it? I mean, it could be Massey as well, so there's probably a bunch of them. So, doesn't matter. But we actually don't own that. Well, do we own any property at Massey? I think that's leased by the Corps. Yeah. But we own a little small parcel by the Little McCoca Bridge by John Deere.
What's that, public information meeting on March sixteenth?
March sixteenth, five thirty PM at the Hotel Julian Dubuque. That's what the notice is about, so.
Does, should we have one of us attend?
I think the first good thing, question, I would be is what par- parcel hits Dubuque County? I'd be interested. But it might be good if somebody from the county represented us.
I would be happy to, to go. And just to be listening to see if there's citizens present and also if I can discern how it impacts us. I don't, not trying to, to make an issue, but, you know, I always felt a little flat-footed on the Hickory Creek situation because we came in late enough that there already's been a lot of other activity in Wisconsin. Trying to get up to speed on that, so. And if either one of you would rather attend?
No, that's fine.
No, I'm fine. It would be curious.
Were they, where are they crossing the Mississippi? In Jackson County, if it's on the Lock and Dam or?
And we did have a couple of work sessions on the Cardinal Hickory Creek. We had some citizens in the northern part of the county that were opposed to that.
Right, right. Attitude and longitude lines, but I don't know where any of that is.
Well, if you look at the map, it runs along like Anthony said, it runs along the Canadian Pacific area. And I know that we own a very small parcel of twenty or probably twenty acres right at the railroad bridge, behind John Deere on the Little McCoca. How we got it, I have no idea. I remember seeing it on the map as I looked at our county stuff.
Well, I will go.
I think probably the appropriate motion would be to receive and file the communication.
I will make a motion to receive and file the publication.
Second.
An notice.
Okay, motion made and seconded to receive and file the communication. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item eight B, proof of publication, amendment to zoning ordinance, Colander.
Make a motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Okay, these are the hatch maps. Alright, motion made and seconded to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next up, this is eight C, proof of publication, amendment to zoning ordinance, the Valentine property, this is the hatch maps for the Valentine issue.
I'll make a motion to approve the proof of publication.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the proof of publication. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. We have eight D, annual manure management plan, Donald Schmidt.
You want to do them individually?
Uh, we can do them together. And we have another eight E, annual manure management plan, Tom Cook.
Make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to receive and file. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Carried three zero. Alright, number, item number nine on the agenda. We have approval of appointments. So A1 Civil Service Commission. Nine A1 Civil Service Commission.
Applicant is Kathy Flynn Thurlow. Make a motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the appointment of former county recorder Kathy Flynn Thurlow to the Civil Service Commission. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Carried three zero. Uh, next up is A1 two, which is the Dubuque County Food Policy Council. And I believe we have a couple of those. We have, just one? Okay. Trying to blow it up here so I can read it, unless somebody wants to.
Richard Henderson.
Richard Henderson, Richard F. Henderson. What's your pleasure?
I will make a motion to approve Richard Henderson on the Dubuque County Food Policy Council.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the application of Richard Henderson. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Carried three zero. Nine B would be open vacancies for informational purposes.
Got a question, informational purposes about the Equal Opportunity Committee. Do we have any update on that?
No, I have not been able to meet with Mike Wall since the budget process. I met with him, I think in December, but we have not had a follow-up meeting.
He's been writing?
We, somebody had requested.
I believe I did.
Yeah, and I'm working with him because he works and so none of the Mondays work for him, so.
Oh, I see.
I'm working with him to find a time that'll work.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
Alright, we're going to go to item ten.
It'll be on the next agenda, but it was, because it was received too late for this meeting. But you do have a resignation from the Board of Health as well, so that vacancy will be on.
Was that Matthew Sanford?
Yes, it was.
He moved from the area, okay.
Okay. Next up is item ten, personnel requisitions. We have ten A, we have a clerk cashier for the treasurer's office. And Dawn, any comments on this?
This one, the employee was promoted to the admin assistant at our conservation department and so it is filling that vacancy.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the requisition?
And I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the personnel requisition in ten A. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried. Alright, ten B, network administrator for IT. We have Nathan Gilmore, our IT Director. And Dawn Sherman, our HR Director, to talk about this.
Good evening, supervisors. So it is not a mass exodus from the IT department. It is just one position. And after spending a couple of weeks working with my staff, some internal shuffling from existing positions to newer positions. So, systems will go to network, help desk will go to systems. And I would like to post help desk manager if approval was given tonight.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve, and we have three of these. And I'm assuming that you include all three in?
Yes, I would like to if I can.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, but I did have a question. Is the, the pay is not necessarily the same for all of them?
Uh, help desk and ERP are a tier below network and systems.
Okay. Is it a, and we're in discussion. I know we reevaluated those positions and I don't really want to go, but is it, is the help desk, desk a tough position, tougher position to fill? um, a, a tough position, tougher position to fill? Because Jared has been in that position, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, any downside to Jared moving up? Um.
No, I am very happy that Jared is interested in moving to the systems.
Okay.
Um, he will be a, he will be fantastic.
And you're confident you'll be able to find somebody to fill the help desk position?
I am much more confident because of the changes that were done previously.
Okay.
By this board.
Alright, anything else? Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the three positions in ten B, C, and D? Network administrator for IT, systems administrator for IT, and help desk manager for IT. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, carried.
Thank you.
Three to zero.
Nathan, can you stick around for another minute or two? Thank you.
Okay, we have tabled and pending items. Now, at this time, we did table one of our work sessions today, boards and commissions update. Uh, we probably have some road stuff. Uh, I'm not sure if, you know, if you want to be done that now. The boards and commissions, uh, I mean, this would all be, anything that we tabled didn't get to. So, um, does anybody have, uh, boards and commissions report?
I'm okay if we, we don't address that. I don't have anything to report.
Okay, and I don't have anything that I need to report on within, that can't wait till the next meeting. So, uh, Anthony, how about your?
I think we covered most of my items except for, you know, when Chandler was here, we had, we're going to have some discussion on the DMATs funding match. But he, he said, uh, he's okay waiting till the next board meeting to bring that back.
Alright, and then, uh, you and I had the.
We had a couple of the work items, work session.
Yeah.
Engineering work session. I haven't, I don't want to go over that if the board does, just.
Do you want to go over anything in your work, uh, session? We had, uh.
Me, I think, are the only ones that you didn't discuss.
Speed limit on shared portion of Op Cat Road.
And Mary, what would be?
And then, Anthony, you and I had the, what, what was the other one that I, we were kind of emailing each other?
To recess and come back in or just let the camera roll, otherwise it's all different.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. That probably doesn't need to be talked about today. Chair, would you rather add that?
We can, we can quickly discuss it.
Chair, for consistency related to our recording of not recording work sessions, uh, we probably should recess and then come back in.
Okay, well, then I need to get through the, uh, um, the, the rest of the, uh, uh, agenda. So, alright, we'll come back to this, Anthony. So, uh, is there, are there any other tabled or pending items? Hearing none. Uh, I would then go to public comments. At this time, anyone may address support on matters which are of concern to that person, which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Make your comments. However, no formal action on your comments may be taken at this time because of the notice requirements. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to recess this meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried three zero.